First Baptist Church is here. Thank you for being here Pastor.
Dear God in heaven, we thank you for this opportunity to gather. And Father be asked now that you would look upon this common council. Thank you for your many, many abundant blessings upon each of us. Thank you God for the freedom to embrace you and the free to reject you. Thank you God for loving us so. The scriptures remind us that we citizens, we ought to pray for the governing authorities since you have established those. Pray for Mayor John Buckley and for this assembled council. I ask God that you graciously grant them wisdom to govern on behalf of all. Grant them a sense of the felt and true needs of the Harnell community. Grant them a keen thirst for justice for those seeking it. Grant them peace in their personal lives and in the lives of their family. I pray for the agenda that's set before them tonight. Please give them an assurance of what will please you and what will benefit those who live and work in the Harnell community. I offer this prayer in the name of Jesus Christ together we all say amen.
Would you may say anything from prayer?
I pledge allegiance
To the President of the United States of America. To the recovery of the citizens.
Entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting. Motion by Jeff Brown, second by John Allison. Any questions on the minutes? If not, call the roll.
Conicello, Brown.
Yes.
Allison.
Yes.
Argent Cherry.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Cleveland.
Yes.
Valentine. Shinnibarger.
Yes.
Carbone. Nine eyes, Your Honor.
Thank you. You also have the reports of officers in front of you. I'll accept the motion to approval. Motion by John Allison, second by Melissa. Any questions on any of those? If not, call the roll.
Conicello. Brown.
Yes.
Allison.
Yes.
Argent Cherry. Warner. Cleveland.
Yes.
Valentine. Passage.
Yes.
Shinnibarger. Carbone. Nine eyes, Your Honor.
Thank you. That brings us to committee reports, which we've got quite a few tonight. Is up first.
The Honorable John John De Buckley, Mayor of the Council of the Council. Bills are being mailed by other committee members Jeff Brown, Jim Bassett, Richard Argent Cherry, Kevin Valentine, and Chairman John Carbone. Bills are being approved on the council. Five hundred ninety-four thousand one hundred nine dollars and fifteen cents. Minus fifteen thousand two hundred sixty-seven dollars and thirty-nine cents. A payroll of seventy-two thousand nine hundred dollars and twenty-one cents. For total audit of six hundred eighty-two thousand two hundred and seven-six dollars and seventy-five cents. Respectfully submitted, John Carbone, Chairman John Allison.
The chairman. Next up is Youth and Recreation. Jeff, you're gonna be a little bit busy today.
I was gonna say. To the Honorable John Buckley, Mayor, Members of the Council, ladies and gentlemen. Youth and Recreation Committee met on Wednesday the twenty-first at five-thirty. Following members were in attendance. Jessica Cleveland, Richard Argent Cherry, Jeff Brown, Jim Bassett as guests. Mayor Buckley, Joe Peltier, Bill Hogan, Kristoff Lukia. Nick Cowleton, Associate Director, Seth Gill. Following items were discussed. After the parks program. Who's retiring on the twenty-eighth. Motion was made to go into executive session to discuss proposed MOU between the city and the Harnell YMCA. Motion made by Jessica, seconded by Rich, all ayes. Motion made to go back into regular session. Motion made by Jeff B., seconded by Rich, all ayes. Committee reviewed the list of playgrounds. Committee agreed to the following playgrounds to be used this summer for the parks program. Bryant School, James Street, Stevens Street, Columbia and Madison Ave., Maple City High School. Tenanted date set for opening playgrounds June twenty-eighth. All hired playground attendants will be required to take CPR training. Prior starting to be offered by Frank Wazowski, Fire Department Chief. Committee reviewed the list of playground applicants. Currently we have ten applicants. Deadline is set for maybe fourteen. Committee will meet on Monday with the list of applicants that we wish to offer positions to. Letters will be sent for the pool. A. Committee reviewed proposed MOU between the city and the Harnell YMCA that will allow the city, excuse me, the YMCA to manage day-to-day operational pool. B. Motion was made to approve the MOU with the committee asking the Attorney Joe Peltier to make minor modifications in the language and forward the MOU onto City Council for approval. Motion made by Jeff, seconded by Jessica, all ayes. Motion made by Jessica, seconded by Rich to adjourn the meeting at six forty, all ayes. Next meeting is scheduled for Wednesday seventeenth at six P M. We'll stick with the youth and recreation theme and we'll do the rest of tonight. To the Honorable John De Buckley, Members of the Mayor, Members of the Council, ladies and gentlemen. Youth and Recreation Committee met on Wednesday seventeenth, six P M, with Council members. In attendance, Jessica Cleveland, Jeff Brown, Richard Argent Cherry, John Allison, John Buckley, and Bill Hogan. Meeting was began at six oh one, but following items were discussed. The memorandum of understanding between YMCA and the city of Harnell was formally approved through the motion by Jeff, seconded by Rich, all ayes. The summer program is planned again when we saw opening of the pool on June twenty-sixth and the playground opening on June twenty-eighth. The following park, Veterans Park, Bryant School, Columbia, Stevens Street, Harnell High School, Madison Ave. The pool will depend upon everything being up and running and repairs and ordering. Applications were reviewed with twelve playgrounds. Two pool openings needed to be filmed. Applicants reviewed and selected letters to go out to the applicants. CPR training, Chief Wazowski, tenanted they scheduled that June fifth would make up on June twelve. Motion to adjourn at six thirty-seven by Rich, seconded by Jeff. All ayes. All right, and the quality of life.
I think you're setting the record for reading the most committee reports in one meeting.
I don't know. These are long ones. All right, to the Honorable John De Buckley, Members of the Council, ladies and gentlemen. The quality of life meeting was held in Council Chambers Monday through the twenty-seventh at five-thirty P M. In attendance, Mr. Benjamin, Jessica Cleveland, Dan Warner, Lisa Concello, John Allison, Joe Bassett. Police Chief Ted Murray, Fire Chief Frank Wazowski, Post Support Director Butler La, and Mayor John Buckley. Called the order at five forty-one P M. We reviewed the intent of the meeting was to discuss the impact on the quality of life of city residents with legalization of recreational use cannabis. Overgiving the law provided and Mayor Buckley reviewed advice for any recommendations related to all nuisance smoke. Committee reviewed current ordinances regarding cigarette smoking, vaping, and recreational buyers. The department heads reviewed the enforcement of the current ordinances as well as potential impacts related to marijuana smoke. The committee will review and need to make recommendations to other committees and the council as appropriate. Review, the goal is to be proactive in the community regarding potential impacts of reform as well as create awareness for new and existing ordinances. With no further business, the meeting was adjourned. Motion to adjourn at six thirty-six by Melissa, seconded by John Allison. Respectfully submitted, Jessica Cleveland, Chair.
Thank you guys, well done.
Thank you.
It's a mouthful. Your motion to approve the committee reports. Motion by Dan, seconded by John Allison. Any questions on any of the reports? I know some of these we'll get into, especially the wires on the agenda and resolution portion. Any questions on those? None? Please call the roll.
Conicello.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Allison. Argent Cherry. Warner.
Yes.
Cleveland. Valentine. Valentine. Shinnibarger.
Yes.
And Carbone.
Yes.
Nine eyes, Your Honor.
Thank you. That brings us to the resolution portion of the meeting. The first resolution is do not occupy a paper of the board's office.
Where a section one oh seven point one of chapter one of the two thousand sixteen Uniform Code Supplement provides that all tenants and property owners are entitled to due process when a government unit or agency responsible for administration, enforcement of the Uniform Code when a property is declared dangerous. And whereas the code provides that the owner or tenant of any building must be afforded said due process in the event that the building is declared a danger and a notice is posted upon the structure requiring that all people shall vacate the premises. And whereas section one oh one point two point six point seven point eight of chapter one of the two thousand sixteen Uniform Code Supplement defines when a property is in imminent danger and the occupants must immediately vacate said structure except for the purpose of securing the structure, making the required repairs, removing the hazardous condition, or demolishing demolishing the structure. Now therefore, it is hereby resolved that if the property is in imminent danger as defined in the law, a sticker shall be placed upon the building giving the owner or other occupant of building notice of the authority having jurisdiction to place the do not occupy notice on the building. The notice shall further include the reasons that do not occupy was placed on the building. It shall further include notice of the right of the owner or occupant of the building to be heard in front of the City of Harnell Board of Public Safety. The notice shall further contain a time within which the owner or occupant may request a hearing and the manner which the owner or occupant must make that that request. Said request for a hearing may be made either orally by email or by writing to the City of Harnell Code's Office. And said hearing must be requested within ten days of placing the do not occupy sticker upon the building. If the building is not in imminent danger by this, but the city feels the property should not be occupied due to various code violations prior to placing the do not occupy notice on the building, it is the City of Harnell Code's Office's intention to put a do not occupy notice on the building. Said notice shall have the reasons for the Code's Office doing so, including citations to the specific code sections that are in violation. Said notice shall also inform the owner occupant of their right to a hearing in front of the City of Harnell Board of Public Safety in order to provide reasons why the owner occupant believes the code enforcement officials proposed action should not be taken. And furthermore, the notice shall be given to the City of Harnell Code's Office either in writing, by email, or by telephone within ten days of the potential notice that a do not occupy sticker has been placed upon a structure.
Well, that was a mouthful, so there'll be a quiz at the end of the meeting. We do have our code officer Larry Bacon here tonight to kind of go over this a little bit in detail. Give me a little bit of nuance. Before we do that, I will accept the motion. Motion by Jeff Brown, seconded by Kevin Valentine. Larry, you want to give just a little bit of background?
Well, before we can tag folks, we have to give them hope. Or anything other than imminent danger, imminent danger, you can tag the they can't occupy. For other violations such as unsanitary and all that stuff, like marijuana laws. They'll refer to us as unsanitary. Before I can tag that, I guess you know, it's pretty gross. Which is lovely, though. Before, I put the money. But this is a tool. And then we have the whole part that they appeal to. Has to go in front of two other city officials, not not the poles. Then public safety, I'd like to see Saturday, too. They probably be the ones they go in front of.
Yeah, well, have the Board of Public Safety listen.
As a nutshell, kind of what we had. We're being excited because we can't.
Yeah, and just from your perspective, you know, give the council, you know, we obviously talk on a, you know, weekly day-on-day basis sometimes, but just kind of give the council kind of a, you know, a peek behind the curtain as to some of the structures that you have red tagged in the past or, you know, scenarios where you would need to red tag it.
It's hard.
Sometimes it's structural, but there's there's other circumstances surrounding properties.
The players tag the foundation, that tag or foundation wasn't safe. Tagged one for unsanitary, which I kind of did. Should have been gave you a process, but I didn't have the legally involved, so didn't give you a process. I guess any poles, they they could still occupy, but it wasn't happening. Those are the types, really the types.
Mayor. Mayor.
Joe Peltier.
Yes, Joe.
Another example would be if a meth lab was, we found a meth lab in the city, there's a lot of dangerous chemicals in there, and this would allow Larry to go in and put a sticker on it and get everybody out of there immediately. And we've had that problem in the city, unfortunately.
That's a good point, so, you know, there's there's, on one hand, there's times where the structure itself is a danger, but then there's a behavioral, you know, what's going on in the structure. So that's that's a good point, glad you had mentioned that, Joe.
Okay.
The local foundation, they have to set a common tag around the local companies.
I can make it. Start the foundation, not say.
And the process gives them time to fix the problem, or what?
No, they they get a chance to save money, shouldn't be, but say. But they're in danger, like they're very, they can't actually.
Yeah, if the structure is about to collapse, you know, that's a different story. If it's, you know.
But they still need a full steering.
Yeah.
They need. But they need, they have to work for.
You know, if the foundation, let's just say a house, you know, the foundation is collapsing, you know, we're not gonna say, well, you know, you've got to wait to, you know, come and have your hearing and, you know, take your chance.
This is what I have to decide. Professional to judge.
Yeah.
Final fighter.
Yeah, I would say, and I don't want to speak to Larry, but Larry, Larry is qualified for votes, judgment calls.
Yeah, if 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 they can always go in and do remediation.
You know?
Yes.
Those instances where they can continue to occupy even though you.
As as they, that's what I'm saying, if they're in danger, they can't. They have to get out of here. But.
Maybe a funding issue or something like that, they can still.
They have ten plus time, and they need to. And then they go in front of public safety, people about safety. I mean, firemen and not, they have a reason for. It would be better.
Yeah, and there's an assortment of behavioral issues that we run into in the, you know, the fire department sees sees different things where you go into an apartment and they take it down, the smoke detectors. You know, maybe the, you know, the the vent to the heating system has been blocked or obstructed. I think we've had that on South Division Streets, and heat res. So the, you know, tho- those are little, you know, obviously, you know, when codes of the fire department goes in, they spot them right away. They're a little trickier, you know, when when the house is crumbling and in danger of collapse, that's, you know, an easier thing to identify and put the tag on. But I think that, you know, this is another another tool in the toolbox for for codes. And and plus, you know, it gives the folks that are in these structures an avenue, you know, to appeal or or to be heard, so. Any other questions? That's. If not, call the roll.
Conicello. Brown.
Yes.
Allison.
Yes.
Argent Cherry. Warner.
Yes.
Cleveland.
Yes.
Valentine. Shinnibarger.
Yes.
Carbone.
Yes.
Nine eyes, Your Honor.
Thank you. The next resolution is our annual balancing resolution. And this is where we have some accounts that are over and some that are under. The city can go and does her, does her magic and makes it all, makes it all back, so. Well, thank you, Michelle.
Whereas the following transfers must be made to close out the appropriation accounts for the fiscal year twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one. Now therefore, be it resolved that the following transfers are hereby approved. There are twenty-one transfers that are listed below, please look them over. I'm not gonna read them.
Yeah, you don't have to read them. I won't put you through that.
Well, all of our adjustments are done. Have we finalized twenty, 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 twenty?
Almost, there's a couple of revenues that are still kind of hanging out there. So we're getting close to that. What what I was tentatively planning is having, as soon as we get get it all and put it together, having a finance meeting and and just going back and just reviewing it all. And I I think you're gonna be pleasantly surprised how well we we actually, you know, managed the city through a pandemic. There's still a couple of things that are kind of hanging out there that are waiting from the state. There's a aim payment that hasn't come in yet, that's that's still pending, that's kind of hanging out there. But we're getting close to it. Any idea when that when that will be finalized, the aim payment?
It's not very loud. It's so good to hear.
Yeah. It looks like the chips that they withheld last year are gonna roll over into this year. So that's a good thing, plus they just made increased chips and paid. Winter recovery also got a got a bump, so it'll be, it'll be good for us as well. We're getting closer, when we have, when we have all the final details, we'll get financed together and go over it all in detail and do a, basically, a new review and look back.
And see if the shit comes out on the. Is there, with our common software, I mean, is there anything that we could do to? I know we're always that, you know, those four or five weeks to be contacted at the end of the year. Is there anything we can do to be a little bit more firm or okay?
No, because we're so weak.
So when that year ends, whether any becomes like a, like a milestone, like you the problem council, you know, that we don't have the money in hand, we know it's coming.
Well, we don't know for sure that it's coming, we don't have it, so. This is a new situation, usually have a problem, we're there. So we just don't know privately here, because we don't know for sure.
Yeah, and on the other end of that, you know, sometimes there might be, you know, a vendor out there that hasn't submitted a bill and the bill hasn't gotten to us yet. And, you know, it might be a month or two down the road. You know, just because we get it late doesn't mean that it's charged this year's budget, it's still gets charged to the prior year. You know, obviously, there's a time where we, you know, just close everything out, but we want to make sure that we're as accurate as we possibly can be. Charge things to be appropriate here.
Just a milestone, please.
For the balancing resolution? Any other questions? If not, call the roll.
I need the motions.
Oh, motions. Motion by Melissa, seconded by Jeff.
Who's the second one? Jeff.
Call the roll.
Conicello.
Yeah.
Brown.
Yes.
Allison.
Yes.
Argent Cherry.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Cleveland.
Yes.
Valentine. Shinnibarger.
Yes.
Carbone.
Yes.
Nine eyes, Your Honor.
Good, thank you. The next resolution has to do with the Canis Steel Street Bridge. Very loud and clear for Steve to hear.
Whereas the project for the bridge replacement bin two-two-one-eight-one-four-zero, Canis Steel Street over Crosby Creek in the city of Harnell, Steuben County, pin six-seven-five-four-point-nine-five is eligible for funding under Title twenty-three U.S. Code as amended. That calls for the apportionment of the costs such program to be borne at the ratio of eighty percent federal funds and twenty percent non-federal funds. And whereas the city of Harnell desires to advance the project by making a commitment of one hundred percent of the non-federal share of the cost of the bridge replacement bin two-two-one-eight-one-four-zero, Canis Steel Creek over Crosby Creek in the city of Harnell, Steuben County. Now therefore, the Harnell Common Council duly convened does hereby resolve that the Harnell Common Council hereby approves the above-subject project. And it is hereby further resolved that the Harnell Common Council hereby authorizes the city of Harnell to pay in the first instance one hundred percent of the federal and non-federal share of the cost of design and right-of-way incidentals and acquisition work for the project or portions thereof. And it is further resolved that the sum of two million seven hundred and eighty-two thousand eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars is hereby appropriated and made available to cover the cost of participation in the above phase of the project. It is further resolved that in the event the full federal and non-federal share costs of the project exceeds the amount appropriated above, the city of Harnell shall convene as soon as possible to appropriate said excess amount immediately upon the notification by New York State Department of Transportation thereof. It is further resolved that the mayor of the city of Harnell be and is hereby authorized to execute all necessary agreements, certifications, or reimbursement requests for federal aid and/or mayor shall aid on behalf of the city of Harnell with the New York State Department of Transportation in connection with the advancement or approval of the project and providing for the administration of the project and municipality's first instance funding of project costs and permanent funding of the local share of federal aid and state aid eligible project costs and all project costs within appropriation therefore that are not eligible. And it is further resolved that a certified copy of this resolution be filed with the New York State Commissioner of Transportation by attaching it to any necessary agreement in connection with the project. And it is further resolved that this resolution shall take effect immediately.
Thank you, is there a motion from the ninth ward alderman?
I'm sorry, John, I didn't catch what you just said.
I was asking if you wanted to make the motion since it's, the bridge is in your ward.
Yes.
So I could find Melissa, so. Obviously, this bridge has been a long anticipated project and it's, it's all back a number of years, as as most bridges do, they they take a long time to to plan and, you know, it's simply the funding, the hardest part, but the nice thing about this is between the federal and and state aid, it'll be a hundred percent covered, so, which is a great thing for for our residents and taxpayers. And it'll be nice just to get that thing reopened, get on your folks' lip right there. And it's been a challenge, even with the sidewalk, you know, it's not just the traffic with the sidewalks and you put up the barriers and the kids try to sneak around them and so, but contractors awarded the twentieth year, twentieth year is the word last year on the pair of bridges that he did on San Diego. And Box Holberg, Holberg Chauji Ron, they did a very nice job on both those. I'm confident they'll do an excellent job on Canis Steel Street as well. So what comes next after Canis Steel Street Bridge, and this is slated to be complete by the end of October. Obviously, weather changing and, you know, things could happen. But they're they're targeting the end of October for an opening. After that, we're going to set our sights on the South Division Street Bridge, which would be the third bridge over Crosby Creek. There are other bridges that's, you know, falling into disrepair. All three of those bridges are right around the same age, Grand Streets, South Division, Canis Steel Street. They're all nineteen fifties vintage, so. So South Division hopefully will be next, and Kirk Street. That that bridge is starting to show its age. So the good thing is the city of York has funded Bridge of York, Bridge of York program. So we're already applying for those bridges. So hopefully, you know, we'll get Canis Steel Street Bridge up and running and then have another one and a hopper, you know, lined up for down the road. So we'll let you know when those announcements are made and, in the meantime, keep the prisoners off. And really, other than that, you know, we we're gonna be in pretty good shape once we get those other two bridges complete, because when you look around the city, you know, we've done over, you know, over the last, you know, recent years, East Hand Scooter, done, you know, the River Street Bridge is is on the newer side. So, you know, I think bridge-wise, we're gonna be in pretty good shape. And we have, we have more bridges in the city of Harnell, by the way. We have, Harnell has the most bridges of any municipality in Steuben County. So it's not an easy task replacing all of those bridges or even, you know, keeping them up. It may require, you know, a certain degree of maintenance throughout a year as well. So, anyway, there you go. Probably talking a little bit too much about bridges, I don't know. All right, we have the motions.
Yes.
We have the roll call.
Not yet.
Not yet, all right, any questions?
Conicello.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Allison.
Yes.
Argent Cherry.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Cleveland. Valentine.
Yes.
Shinnibarger.
Yes.
Carbone.
Yes.
Nine. Nine-Eyed Shonah.
Thank you. Next resolution is the YMCA pool agreement.
Whereas the city of Hornell owns an outdoor swimming pool located at Rettins Memorial Park in the city of Hornell. And whereas the city of Hornell wishes to enter into an agreement with the Hornell family YMCA to manage said pool. And whereas the city of Hornell and the Hornell family YMCA have negotiated a management agreement for the pool for the year twenty-twenty-one. And whereas the common council for the city of Hornell believes it is in the best interest of the citizens of the city of Hornell to enter such an agreement. Now therefore, it is hereby resolved that the city of Hornell authorizes the mayor to execute the attached management agreement for the pool for the year twenty-twenty-one. Said agreement is attached here too and is incorporated by reference into this resolution as if fully set forth. This agreement shall take effect beginning June first, twenty-twenty-one and shall expire on the fifth day of September, twenty-twenty-one.
Thank you. And tonight, we're joined by three members of the the Y team, like Kristoff, who's the director of the Y, Seth and and Nick, who, Seth's the aquatics director. Am I getting your title right? And 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 Nick Houghton. So over over the past year, and and those those of you on the uh, on Youth and Rec already know this, but for those of you who don't, over the last year or so, we've been in discussions about, um, you know, what opportunities are out there for the city and the YMCA to partner on in regards to our municipal swimming pool. And and Kristoff has some experience um, in in need built when he operated the YMCA there. And uh, so we we started talking about it and, you know, what it could possibly look like and 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 the benefits to the community. And and then COVID, and uh, you know, kind of put the brakes on uh, that and and everything else for a while, but we kept talking throughout. And uh, you know, as as things started to come together, we we had them come to a uh, a youth and recreation meeting. Started to put together the pieces of a of an MOU and um, and that's why we're here tonight. So if if you'd like to uh, just kind of maybe give us an overview of uh, you know, what what it looks like from the YMCA side. I think for, you know, for the city, I I think it's going to be a benefit for the community because, you know, the YMCA, I think is is better equipped to manage a pool, um, and and offer things that the city, uh, you know, the city hasn't been able to historically as far as programming and then, you know, do more fun things. We we've operated the pool and it's basically, you know, we opened the pool, it's open swim, you know, everyone jumped in. But we we haven't really taken it to that next level. And I feel like that's where the YMCA can really take the ball and run with it. And Kristoff, I don't want to speak for you, but you know, maybe just touch base uh, for some of the council members that aren't on the the Youth and Recreation Committee. And and tell them a little bit uh, about, I know Melissa, you know, you're a board member, uh, Jill Pelch, the the city attorney's a board member, so they have a a little bit more in-depth knowledge. Um, but like they like to hear from me, just kind of, you know, maybe talk about what we've already talked about.
Mayor, Melissa, I can't even have him come forward a little bit. I can't hear him.
Do you mind stepping forward? Thank you.
Can you hear me now, Joe?
Yes.
So uh, is the mayor of the YMCA's strength in programming? And the the city have a great resource in the facility of the pool. Uh, and where we think we can enhance our resource continually is to come in and and offer YMCA programs uh, for the youth, uh, young adults, seniors, for all ages. Um, I think, you know, it's a it's an underutilized resource, but the city doesn't have, you know, program directors or aquatic partners. So the management agreement will basically be that the city will take care of the facility, uh, take care of the building grounds, take care of the chemicals, uh, any capital work. And then, um, Seth and Nick, with their expertise in programming, will manage the lifeguards and the staff and uh, and the the teachers to run more programs, have more events. Uh, they're, you know, make it more of a place that the uh, the kids and beauty want to go instead of just, you know, for open swim, for the set home. So we're we're excited. We're doing it in a one-year agreement. We hope it will, you know, be for many more.
Yeah, so this is my overall grant. You know, we put the end to the summer, we'll sit down, probably, you know, maybe sometime in September, October and review it, you know, see how it works, see what, you know, do we want to continue, what can we do better? You know, there's, it's always gonna be a learning curve, but I I think it's really a a nice opportunity to partner with the Y and really, you know, kind of take it, take it somewhere that we couldn't do it on our own. And and I just want to say thank you for the outreach and, uh, you know, the willingness to to partner. And, you know, and even even throughout the pandemic, you know, we we've been good partners and, you know, we've been worked creatively a little bit together and trying to, trying to come up with some solutions and uh, you know, it's a very difficult time. So um, I think this kind of dovetails on that relationship and, uh, you know, obviously, there's gonna be a benefit for the Y, a benefit for the city, but ultimately a benefit for the residents. And and I think, uh, I I think that shouldn't be, uh, you know, we shouldn't be excited about because we we have a great facility and and the better we can utilize it, the better it is for all. So.
Yeah, we're sure.
Yeah, absolutely. Anyone have any questions? Did you get the motions? Got the motions. Motions, motion by Kevin. Second by John Carbone. Any questions? Silence? If not, call the roll.
Conicella.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Allison.
Yes.
Argent Cherry. Warner.
Yeah.
Cleveland.
Yes.
Valentine. Shina Barger.
Yes.
Carbone.
Yes.
Nine-Eyed Shonah.
Thank you. And that brings us to our final resolution, which is the foreign fighter's policy.
Whereas New York State imposes a two percent tax rate on the premiums of fire insurance policies written by out-of-state insurers against loss or damage by fire on property located in the state. And whereas the monies derived from the tax are known as two percent funds or foreign fire insurance funds. And whereas the monies collected through this tax are remitted annually by insurers to the New York State Department of Financial Services. Therefore, the Department of Financial Services distributes these funds to fire service entities, including fire departments, fire companies, benevolent associations, and Fastney Firemen's Association of the State of New York. And whereas the New York State Comptroller's Office recently conducted an audit of the Hornell two percent funds slash foreign fire insurance funds. And whereas the Comptroller's Office made the following key recommendations. One, consider developing comprehensive policies and procedures related to FFI tax money. Two, ensure that Chamberlain adequately maintains custody of the FFI tax money and expenditures are adequately supported and approved before payment. Now therefore, it is hereby resolved that the attached policies and procedures be adopted by the Hornell Common Council and shall take effect immediately.
Thank you. There's a motion. Motion by Kevin. Second by Dan. But this this might show like hands. How many, how many of the council members are familiar with two percent money or foreign fire insurance? It's probably not. It doesn't really get discussed too often. So this this has been around and you might, you probably know the history better than I do. The former Chief Kelly, um, it's it's been around for decades and decades. And recently, the Comptroller's Office has been going around the state doing audits. So ba- basically, in a nutshell, what it is, and it's outlined in the resolution, is the the state collects this two percent money from insurance companies out of state. And 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 two percent of that money or or the collection goes, it gets distributed to fire departments and associations across the state. And and that money is really, it it's been used to, um, uh, a, Luke, you you can kind of chime in on some of the expenditures and, you know, some of the things that used it for in the past, it's kind of kind of helping support the department in in other ways.
Yeah, they use it for various things, you know, about how the challenge that that's worth, we hear it popping from, on the fleet. Uh, jackets, stuff like that. We have a piece of property that we use the money for, you know, the non-injection incorporation. So that's kind of what we do with it. We've been receiving this as when I was nineteen sixty-two.
Mm-hmm.
And I think we purchased a property around sixty-five. So we had it and uh, we called this when the audit was going on.
Yeah, so so the auditors, you know, any time the auditors perform an audit, that they always look for real things to, you know, update or give you suggestions on how you can do things better. The the two percent money is is always been, um, it hasn't run through the city. It's okay. So you wouldn't see it through auto. Um, the Board of Public Works or or Board of Public Safety wouldn't see it through their bills. It's always been independently done through the the fire department and 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 it really through, through your union and or the Smoke Eaters Association. So you've you've had what, uh, you know, kind of a structure there where the members would vote on on the use of the money. So it's not, so these funds are not funds that flow through our budget. And they're not funds that the the mayor or the council has any discretion over as far as the use of the funds. It's solely up to the the department, the fire department, not, I shouldn't even say the fire department, it's the members. It's the members of the department that are in charge of this money. And 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 the same holds true for for any any fire company throughout the state. Um, but the the comptroller did did their audit, they performed their audit and they had some suggestions. And that was basically uh, for the Chamberlain to be to be the custodian of the money. So in in other words, it doesn't change, it doesn't really change anything on the members' end. They'll still use it in the same manner that they've historically used it. But now the Chamberlain will will keep the money in and the cap and tracking them. And instead of the the membership actually issuing the checks, the Chamberlain will will do that under the cap. Um, they they will have a city structure in place where they approve the the expenditures. Some are basically on home pilots, uh, reoccurring those utilities, taxes, that that sort of thing on the on the property they own. But that that's really hitting the nutshell. So go ahead, Joe.
How much money do we talk on two percent?
Uh, but that varies year to year, does it not? So it it it's basic. I, what what's a, like a typical number that you would get, uh, average year?
Hold up.
Seventeen? Which usually in that ballpark?
What's the reason they have all of a sudden doing accountability or are they trying to restrict it?
Um, I I think, I think the comptroller's office from their vantage point, I don't want to speak for them, but I think they're looking for just to update the mechanism by which that they operate with the with the monies, uh, you know, traceability, accountability, making sure that there's some oversight, uh, you know, outside of just the the fire, uh, the firemen themselves. And so there was suggested that the the Chamberlain be the custodian of the money. Now, it doesn't, you know, from a functional standpoint, it doesn't change anything on their end, other than instead of, you know, sitting down at the end of the month and, you know, they've got, uh, you know, a handful of bills and doing it themselves. They'll now bring it to the Chamberlain and the Chamberlain will, uh, you know, have a a record of those bills, just to make sure everything is accurate. And and I I think that's the other part that the comptroller's office is really looking for is just accurate record keeping. And 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 that's, uh, obviously, you know, where the where the Chamberlain comes in. So really, put put you on the spot with this audit, Michelle, but uh, it's it's not really, it it doesn't affect anything that the city does. You know, it takes up a little bit of Michelle's time. But it doesn't, like I said, it it has nothing to do with our budget. This is all separate. The account itself, uh, which the money is in, is a separate account, uh, outside of the city budget. So it doesn't, uh, you know, it really doesn't have anything to do with what we do here as a council. It's just recommend, acting on recommendations from the comptroller's office to satisfy what they want and and, you know, have an extra layer of accountability. But it but it also protects the the firefighters themselves in case there was, uh, I don't know, you know, if there if there was you know, something with the with a bank account or, um, you know, say they had an expenditure, I don't know, that was missed or whatever, there's extra eyes on it now. So so I think that that helps them and it satisfies the the comptroller's office, which ultimately is is the goal of an audit, to improve.
This is the fire control. Is it that, I mean, is this from the the union?
That is.
So what's the thing, uh, from the firemen or something? It bothers you guys or? You don't pay the way you want to?
Well, we actually stopped and, uh, we wanted to see the corrective action plan today. After we saw what sound was, and on whatever we came up with, we agreed to it and all this really good for us. Like, Joe said, there's no real change and also a word of showing off with the.
Yeah, now that that doesn't mean Michelle says ye or ye, you know, you can or can't get, you know, use this money, you know, for this purpose or for that purpose. She's just a custodian of the checkbook, so.
So they're gonna be able to, they're gonna be able to use it.
They'll they'll use it the same way that they always have, except instead of writing the checks in-house and keeping track of the balance in-house, that'll be.
The balance, if I can be there right now, is they can maintain that?
The balance?
If there's a balance that they've carried over.
That that's all, yeah, it it has nothing to do with, it it doesn't, they could have, you know, ten thousand or a hundred thousand. It doesn't, doesn't do anything for us. It's, that's you know, a third distraction. Yeah.
This this accountability is without.
Correct, correct. So this is just a corrective action plan based on suggestions from the comptroller. You know, it it's it's one of those things that you don't really hear about. And, you know, I I'll be honest, I didn't, you know, I I think I, the first time I heard about two percent money was maybe when I came into office as mayor. It's kind of one of those things that, you know, it's not really on your radar, but then again, why would it be? Because it it doesn't wash through our budget. It's not something that we have to account for in in any way, shape or form as, you know, as a mayor or as a as a council. So it's just, uh, yeah, but it but it's a learning, it's a learning, but, you know, something that we didn't really know about. And uh, I did a little research on the history of it. It, you know, it goes back a long, long time. It's been in existence for longer than I've been around. Michelle, do you have anything to add? They covering off? So that that's it, enough, Joe. Okay. You have the motions?
Yes.
Any questions? I will say, they 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 do put it to good use, though, because they do supplement, you know, what they do, equipment-wise, um, you know, they 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 do, the fire department works in platoon shifts. So, you know, it's not like they're they're blocking in at, you know, nine and leaving at five. So, you know, there there's times when they're, you know, making breakfast and lunch and dinner and they'll use some of that money on groceries and and different things like that. So, so, you know, a lot of that money is put to put to good use and uh, you know, and that's something you don't normally think about, right? When you go to the fire department and they might be cooking up lunch, but you probably don't think, you know, where did where did that grocery money come from or, you know, who who bought the microwave or who bought the toaster, you know, pieces of equipment, even exercise equipment, I think you um, you know, at times you'd use some of those monies for for those pieces of equipment. So there's a, you know, a wide range of things that that, you know, directly benefits them. But in a roundabout way, benefits the city because it's not coming from our taxpayers as well. So so I think, uh, you know, ultimately, you know, overall, it's positive. Anyway, if you have any questions? Call the roll.
Conicella. Brown.
Yes.
Allison. Argent Cherry. Warner.
Yeah.
Cleveland.
Yes.
Valentine. Shina Barger.
Yes.
Carbone.
Yeah.
Nine-Eyed Shonah.
Thank you. We don't have any other days. Well, we have no petitions, but we do have plans.
Now therefore, we are involved that claims the amount of six-hundred-and-eighty-two-thousand-two-hundred-and-seventy-six dollars and seventy-five cents as audited by the audit committee. as audited by the audit committee of the common council of the city of Hornell are approved and authorized paid as audited. Common Council, five hundred ninety-four thousand, one hundred and nine dollars and fifteen cents. New development, fifteen thousand, two hundred and sixty-seven dollars, thirty-nine cents. Payroll, seventy-two thousand, nine hundred dollars and twenty-one cents for a total of six hundred and eighty-two thousand, two hundred and seventy-six dollars and seventy-five cents.
Thank you, Melissa. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Jeff. Second by Rich. Any questions?
Conicella. Brown.
Yeah.
Allison. Argent Cherry.
Yes.
Warner.
Yeah.
Cleveland.
Yes.
Valentine.
Yes.
Shina Barger.
Yes.
Carbone.
Yeah.
Nine Eyes, Your Honor.
Thank you. It's not eight o'clock yet, so we're going to, we're going to get you out on time tonight. Uh, just one last thing, just a reminder, small budget vote is tomorrow. Very important. I urge everyone to take the time and get out and vote. And, uh, we'll, we'll see what happens after that. If John said it ends up being approved, then two people will kind of get involved in a fight. We'll talk about that, uh, when it comes. Other than that, beautiful weather out there. I want to thank everyone for coming tonight. And I thank the, the firemen for coming, the folks from the Y, City Chamberlain, toll officer. Thanks for being here and participating. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Look at those hands, man. Motion by Jeff, second by John Allison. Any questions? All the way.
Conicella.
Yeah.
Brown. Brown. Brown.
Yes.
Allison.
Yeah.
Argent Cherry. Warner.
Yeah.
Cleveland.
Yes.
Valentine.
Yeah.
Shina Barger.
Yes.
Carbone.
Yeah.
Nine Eyes, Your Honor.
Thank you. You are a great.